See Mary. Or is Mary listening at least?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, as long as you're there.
I'm having a technical difficulty.
That's okay, as long as you can hear us.
Yes, I can.
Let's see, my computer time is clearly wrong. Call the meeting to order at six oh four. Let's all stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Susan Seltzer.
Here.
Thomas O'Brien.
Here.
Matthew Buckley.
Here.
Michelle Kaiser.
Here.
Jocelyn Lee.
So over here.
Thank you. Barbara McNerney.
Here.
And Erin Nowak.
Here.
Thank you.
Let's see. Uh. I need to change my screen, one sec.
Sue, are you on the right Wi-Fi?
Yeah, I should be. Yeah, I am. I just, um, my other screen froze. I, I didn't print it out because it was short and, um, that's no fun. Not working. So do me one second. Okay. Here we go. A motion to approve the board agenda as presented.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? I?
I.
Motion carries seven zero. There's none opposed. Um. This is gonna be fun for me. I don't like this. Um. Okay, we're up to presentations.
Okay, so this evening, uh, Mrs. Polczynski is going to be presenting about modest for by sports proposal. Uh, as per the board's discussion at the last board meeting, we've been working, there was a committee that met and she'll talk about that. Um, and she'll be doing that in conjunction with Mr. Golubchuk and Mr. Ferry as the athletic director, one of the athletic directors. So Lena?
I'm here, sorry about that. Um, thank you for. Yep. Sports. Um, I would like to begin this evening by recognizing and thanking the athletic committee members for their time and insightful inputs in planning for the return to play for our modified sports. So on our committee member, on our committee, which met on Monday, the twenty second, it was myself, um, Jeffrey Golubchuk, our middle school principal, Ron Mackey, our transportation supervisor, William Cron, co-athletic director, Christopher Ferry, co-athletic director, Laura LaRoche, our middle school nurse, Susan Seltzer, school board president, Erin Nowak, school board trustee, and Dominic Scotto, our representative as a parent. Um, again, I would like to take the time to thank you for all of your important input. It was very helpful in helping in planning and planning this. So tonight we are talking specifically about our fall two season, which will begin on March first, twenty twenty-one, and it will end April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. The sports that we will be playing in the fall two season are boys and girls soccer as well as boys and girls cross-country.
So in, as in typical seasons, we look at academic eligibility for student athletes. We do this for the club process as well. We look at grades formally, um, at the middle or of the quarter and at the end of the quarter, and then informally, we touch base with teachers. So at the end of the second quarter, we looked at all students' grades in seventh and eighth grade, and any student who was failing two or more classes, as per our code of conduct, we identified as being on academic probation. And typically, our guidance counselor has a one-on-one coaching meeting with the student, and we also notified the parents. So in this case, with sports coming up, there were, for the students who are in academic probation, we followed this exact process. And we also notified, um, the parents, uh, on the phone and via a formal letter as well. So that has all taken place. And then what we're going to do is those students will start the season, uh, and they will have ten days, the, the day of the first game on March tenth, depending on the sport that they play, to get their grades up. And we'll continue to touch base with teachers, we'll meet with the students, and we'll see how it's going and, and how they are meeting towards that progress, in addition to continuing to monitor the progress of our other student athletes as we regularly do. And so we'll, as part of that process, we'll check in with teachers, uh, and again, check in with the students.
I'm gonna interrupt for just one second here because I know Mr. Golubchuk does have to go. Does anyone have question? Are there any board members? We're gonna do question and discussion at the end of the presentation. Um, but if anyone has any questions or discussion specific to the academic eligibility, uh, if you could ask it or clarify it now, uh, and then Mr. Golubchuk does have to step off. All right. Thank you, Mrs. I appreciate you being here this evening.
Of course.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
No problem.
All right. Oh, did Lena disappear? Lena, are you here? Nope, she got kicked out. Okay, so.
Do you want me to start talking about that while she's?
That's okay. I'll, I'll, I'll take over. You go. I truly, I, I appreciate it. Um, unless, Chris, was this your slide by any chance?
It wasn't, but I can continue talking if you, that's fine, I know about them.
That's fine, I'll talk, and then just when it's your slide, just yell. All right. So in terms of.
Sorry, I'm back.
There is no, uh, bus transportation specific to practices. For the soccer, the practice will end at three forty each day, and parents are required to pick up on time. The soccer pickup will be in the upper parking lot with the first car stopping at the no parking sidewalk area. That's here, and we'll have boys and girls on opposite sides and then be able to get them in the car. In terms of cross-country, practice will also end at three forty each day with parents picking up, and the cross-country pickup will be in the loop. Uh, in terms of remote students that participate, that are participating, planning to participate in sports, those parents will need to bring them to school at the end of the day to drop off for practice. We will not be sending bus transportation out to them. Uh, however, there will be school bus transportation for games. If there is an away game, the school district will provide transportation both to and back from away games, and then the parents will pick up at an arranged location upon returning to Greenwood Lake. When there is a home game, we will be playing our home games at Win Stanley Field in Greenwood Lake, and students will be provided transportation to Win Stanley Field, and then parents will pick up from the field. Uh, while I'm talking about Win Stanley Fields, this is our, kind of our big announcement for tonight. Thank you to the town of Warwick and specifically to Kathleen Holder, who is a mom extraordinary, heir and a huge supporter of the district and, uh, village trustee. And, uh, she and I met today, and they are letting us use the field, which has running bathrooms, bathrooms and running water for us to use related to COVID safety. So this is a huge step, and I cannot thank Kathleen enough for her role in helping us set that up.
So this is where, uh, my slides start, so it's gonna be rules for athletes, uh, and coaches. Um, and most of these are coming straight from state or county restrictions, everything that we have to follow. So all the student athletes have to have a medical clearance, um, which we started talking to every, all the seventh and eighth graders. Um, I met with each class individually, um, meetings this week and made sure that they know and well aware of the clearances that they need to have before they start practice on Monday. Um, they will have to have a daily temperature check prior to the practice or games. Um, all student athletes must complete a daily COVID screening to attend the practices and games. Uh, most of the students that are be in school already have most of those done, and then the remote kids, each coach will figure out their system, whether it's going to be scanning in when they get here or meeting up front where they can scan it as well. Um, so each coach will, uh, figure out a spot that's safely for the three, uh, different sports. The girls soccer, the boys soccer, and then the cross-country, which is together. Uh, masks will be worn all times, uh, when they're within six feet apart. Uh, we won't be sharing any of equipment, so water bottles, all that kind of things will try to be provided, uh, and encouraged to bring in their own, um, and then we'll have backup just in case they forget. Um, and we'll figure out some kind of system for, uh, labels or stickers or things like that to make sure that they don't get confused, uh, if they do have the same kind of bottles. Uh, student athletes also have to arrive and depart practice promptly. Uh, we talked about this before, but make sure, uh, as in past rules, that we are a little bit lenient and the first kind to make sure, you know, because traffic happens, things like happens, but they do have to get picked up, and that's why we are saying three forty this year, um, so that they get picked up and, uh, to and from practices. And then rules for coaches, all coaches will complete a da- uh, daily COVID screening questionnaire and temperature check. Uh, masks, same thing, will be worn by coaches, uh, within six feet of each other or six feet of the athletes. Uh, coaches must have a temperature check, um, using the, uh, contactless thermometers and scanners that we have. Also, the, uh, guns that we provided hopefully to the coaches in their bags when we put them all together. Uh, coaches will fill out a roster forms daily, we'll have that electronically, um, or also papered, just to make sure the easiest method for each coach, uh, but we'll do that each daily. Uh, and coaches also, uh, must refer to, they cannot participate for any reason if an athlete um, cannot participate that day, we'll make sure, um, that we are well aware of that, so they can't get to practice uh, for the reasons that the nurse or the office has given us. Uh, the boys and girls soccer home games, we talked about, um, where they're gonna be, but the parents are responsible to arrange the presentation uh, from the game after. There's gonna be a check-in table where the athletes' temperature checks will be, an extra, uh, mask, hand sanitizer wipes will be provided. Uh, an isolation area will be established, uh, for anybody who becomes ill, um, during the contest. Uh, there was one case, uh, during the, uh, winter season that they handled in the isolation, everything worked well, so the county was a good test for it. Um, so they gave us, uh, hints and, and, um, uh, things that we could do to make that a little bit better, which was great. Uh, markings throughout the zone for safety protocols and physical distance reminders, um, the six feet apart and stuff like that. And then we'll have an overseer and a nurse who will represent at home games to ensure the protocols are followed. The site will be at the CVS, which was the benefit of the onsite bathrooms, the sanitation stations, uh, stations, um, and the busing will be provided for athletes from the middle school to the field, because there is a little room between the time, most games don't start till about four o'clock. Um, cross-country, there is no home games, we don't have a home course, so there's no rules about that. Uh, spectator rules. Uh, maximum two per student at, at home games only. Uh, New York State says all spectators must wear face covering at all times and must maintain the six feet physical between spectators. Uh, obviously, if they're a, uh, family, they can stay in their same little areas, but if they're a different families, they're all there, they'll have the six feet distance. Um, they are going to be provided, uh, must provide their own chairs, um, so if they want to have any chairs within that six feet space. Um, we will decided that only home teams only. This is the trend for most districts in, especially for the smaller districts in the county when I was at my athletic directors, uh, because of staffing issues, um, a lot of them felt if you had a lot of games going on, then you're multiplying the amount of people, uh, per staff. Um, they did wanna know, and the people that did say definite before when I had my meeting, that they do expect if we say only home people at ours, that'll probably be a trend for if we go to away visitors. Uh, but Coach Cron and I will definitely be in touch with all the athletic directors of teams that we go against to make sure we have the policy, um, and make sure the parents know all policies before the games. Um, and then there'll be coincident mark where the pairs of chairs can be placed for the six feet distance.
Chris, and I, I'm kind of putting you on the spot here. Um, we have not discussed this, and I did not discuss this with Lena. I kind of just thought about this question as a parent. Um, so we may not have an answer to this, we may have an answer to this, I don't know. Um, but if I'm a parent of a cross-country student and there are no home games, does that mean I'm not gonna have an opportunity to see my kid play, or are the cross-country meets usually in larger locations where they will allow spectators from different sports? Do you know, from, from different schools? Do you know?
As far as I know, right now, the only two meets or two places that, uh, cross-country we're gonna be for this year as of the schedule set up right now is Monroe Woodbury and, uh, Florida. Um, there was talks about there would be no, um, parents or spectators at all at the finish or start lines. So unless they have areas there, but as of right now, it seems like there would be very low restrictions. Monroe Woodbury does have, and we run it, they're gonna use the same courses last year, an area where you can park and you oversee, and there are several places from parking lots where you see them pass, where the athletic directors will ball agree, it's gonna be very hard to maintain it, especially if you're in your car watching. It's not breaking into your spectator rules. So it's all dependent on there. I'm gonna get in touch with both Monroe and, um, uh, Florida to see what their spectators, especially with cross-country, but I know cross-country is gonna be very hard because it's a spread out, uh, sport.
Okay.
I'll have more information for that.
That actually, uh, thank you, and I look forward to seeing that information. I'll make sure we share that information with the community on our back-to-play protocols. Um, and we get that information out to parents. The, if you can definitely look into that for us, I do think that since cross-country is on a course, I'm hoping that they will open it up to not just home spectators, but, uh, to keep us informed on that. Thanks, Chris, and I, I apologize for springing that on you. I just kind of.
That's okay.
Thank you, Chris. Um, I'm back. I'm sorry, I got kicked out twice. Uh, so in the next slide, we're gonna be talking about our financial considerations and, and looking at staffing, um, for the home games. So we had decided that we would like a nurse to attend our home games. Um, that would be a per-game rate to be determined. Uh, we also need to have a modified sports overseer at home games. Uh, that person would oversee, uh, the crowd, make sure everybody's following the rules, we're, we're following the COVID protocols, social distancing, masks, et cetera. Um, again, that would be per-game rate, and that's something that is to be determined. Uh, we do have a question mark on the next statement about videographers for streaming home games. Um, this is something that we can certainly open up to discussion if this is something that the board would, would consider or interested in doing. So that would be the staff portion, and then when we look at our items for financial consideration, we would need to purchase bottled waters because we are required to provide bo- water for the games, um, for both the students that are away and home, uh, I'm sorry, at our home games for the opponent team as well. Um, we would also need to have additional PPE available, so we need extra masks, we need our sanitation hand wipes. We also need, um, uh, sanitizing pumps as well. Uh, we would have sanitization stations available at the field as well, we're responsible for that. And then when we're looking at our field rental fee, um, it's approximately fifty dollars for an application fee to use that field.
Is that per game, or is that?
That is, that's for, it's not, uh, Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong, but that is for the entire season, correct?
Yes, it's a one-time fee.
Uh, and at this time, I, I'd like to open up to questions and discussion.
I have another question.
Sure.
Um, if a student from opposing team comes to the school and they're over, their temperature's over a hundred, does that student, is that student not eligible to play, or is it the entire team at that point then has to reboard the bus and the game doesn't happen?
That, that's a good question, TJ. So we, um, it wouldn't be the entire team. Uh, if that student does, let's say he reads at a hundred degrees, we do have a backup, uh, oral, oral thermometer as well that we're gonna be providing, because sometimes those forehead ones don't always give the most accurate if they're hot, if they were sweating on the bus, whatever was going on. So we do have a backup as well, but if that backup oral reader does read a hundred degrees, then that student would need to be picked up from that field and go home, cannot play in the field, at the game. And it would be the parents, so that parents would need to be contacted, and they would need to come and pick that student up. So the coaches would then need to contact those families.
And then the, the, the team, what, the game would continue because that person is not absolutely COVID positive, right? They only, they have a fever, and so it's just like when we make quarantining decisions in school, we don't do anything, and we know for a fact that the person is positive COVID. So if we, if it becomes ill, that person goes home, the game continues.
And we also have, that's why the isolation area is also there and important to have, because should, should they be waiting for a parent to pick them up, we would put them in the isolation area as well, so that they are away from other players and other spectators. Any other questions or?
I, I have a question. Is the nurse and the COVID overseer mandated or part of section nine rules?
So the overseer is mandated by NISPA, uh, which is the New York State Athletic Association, basically. And then the nurse is not required, it's just something that we wanted to do, seeing as, uh, the sport is kind of out of season. We're playing out of season, it's gonna be down at the field as opposed to at the school building. Um, and we, actually, if we, even if we had it at the school building, I was gonna ask for a nurse anyway, but the nurse is actually not mandated.
We have a trainer, or? That's what most schools do have athletic trainers, and we do not. That's why it also too, when you provide it, that, at a whole away games, there's using an athletic trainer, but since we don't have one that also, I was gonna mention that.
All right. Thank you.
Um, I have a question. Typically, when it's on our campus, we have a police officer. Now it's not on our campus, so what do we do?
So we are looking to, we were waiting on the, on that because we didn't know we were gonna have Win Stanley Park or if we were gonna be at the middle school, and that's two different police districts, as you know. Now that we found out today, we're gonna be able to use Win Stanley Parks, that would be Greenwood Lake Police. So that's gonna be a little bit different for us, so I'll be reaching out to Adam, uh, probably early next week to work with them to see if we can get them to cover.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, as far as the police, do we always have police for outside games? I thought it was only inside games. I never saw a cop for an outside game.
No, they're on the outside games too.
Yeah, we, they're, the, uh, board's philosophy in the last few years, Matt, has been that anytime students are on campus, there is an armed police officer also on campus, whether it's beginning of day, end of day, nighttime, no matter what time of day it is, no matter what the activity.
Always remember seeing him inside, I've never saw one outside before, that's why I wanted to know.
Yeah, no, school-sponsored events.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question?
Yeah, we're doing practices inside.
So we are trying to use the outdoor spaces as much as possible for practices. We've dedicated for soccer, um, the lower parking lot, which is why we're actually having the, the parents pick up in the upper parking lot. Um, so we're, we really would, we are trying to use one hundred percent as much as possible, the outside space. In the event that we do need to use the indoor space, um, the athletic directors, the co-athletic directors have discussed how they would split the gym in half, and they may have to do a rotating schedule for those teams to ensure that, you, you know, we're not going over the physical distancing and all of that, so that we can safely play indoors.
I know it was mentioned in the meeting, um, by Mr. Cron that he wanted, uh, his team to be outside and acclimated to the colder temperature. So that's why he planned on holding as many practices outdoors as possible since they had to play in it.
So how are we able to hold practices inside the gym but not hold regular gym class inside the gym?
So the rules are changed at two thirty. Not from us. Let me be clear about that. It is not from us. It's New York State, they change the rule. They have different rules when it's after school, after two thirty. Specific, specific to sports.
Yes.
So we wouldn't be able, we wouldn't be able to host choir or band practice inside the gym after two thirty then?
So you, could you potentially do that? Yes, they would have to be twelve feet apart. But yeah. That we still have to follow the rules no matter the time of day for band and chorus. Um, we don't do it during, do, I'm trying to mean, we don't do it during the day because of the twelve-foot rule, and we just don't have the space during the school day. After school, could we potentially use the gym in the cafeteria for those? Yes. If the board.
Yeah, cuz.
Go forward with that.
Just so that, like I said in our previous meetings, you know, I understand the mental release and everything of being able to play sports, um, but there's kids that get that exact same thing from the arts program. So I just wanna make sure that we're not gonna just cater to one side, that we could try to cater to all the kids and represent everybody. So it is possible to do that after two thirty and we're gonna be using the gym. I thought to combat that, we said we weren't gonna do any type of indoor practicing, so then it wasn't a picking one over the other. But if we are gonna be able to hold practices inside the gym, then we need to cater to all of our students as well, and try to figure out a way to do choir and band too.
Um, TJ, the, at the time when we mentioned the indoor, the, um, not all board members agreed about not having indoor practice, so indoor practice moved forward.
I was under the assumption that we were all on the same page with that at the last meeting, and so I was surprised when I was looking through this, and I saw we were having indoor.
No, but I know that they're holding as many practices outdoors as possible because of the time of year and temperature. You can't play inside and then go outside and it be forty degrees. But.
So then would anybody be opposed to trying to figure out if we can hold choir and band after school hours? And have Sarah look into something like that?
I say go for it.
If it's possible to do it, I think let's go ahead and try to get it done.
Sarah, is that even a possibility to to do?
So the.
Go ahead.
So we would, we would just have to look at the rules in terms of the twelve feet of space. We'd have to speak with the teachers to see if they are willing to stay after school. Uh, we have to look at the space that it would take up, uh, twelve feet between people, uh, gets, makes for a very small allowable group. I think if both the cafeteria and gymnasium were used as one big space, I think you'd probably get the most out of that. Uh, so we could certainly explore it, we could talk to the teachers to see if they'd be interested. They may have to do it several times a week after school in order to get to all the kids. Um, and it would certainly add to the scheduling of indoor practices and how, how that would iron out in terms of the space and how that would be, that would it would be a scheduling, something to figure out.
Are any other districts doing that as far as we know? I'd be curious to see how they're kind of coordinating, you know?
I have not heard that. No.
No, I'm just thinking of a rainy day, and so soccer now needs to be inside, so now what are the other kids gonna do? So that's, you know, just ha- all happening simultaneously in, in one space. Right? That's the scheduling part of it.
Correct. Um, we could do.
Any other school districts hold band or choir during the school day?
Some of them do, um, so, like, for, uh, and even for us, Mr. Compton does still have band lessons. He just doesn't have full band. I think that the high schools especially, TJ, not meant, and maybe not so much as the middle schools, uh, but the high schools do, a lot of them are holding practices in, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, auditorium? Because they, they have the auditorium and can seat the kids throughout the entire auditorium, where we don't, we don't have an auditorium. And even a lot of the middle schools have auditoriums that I can think of off the top of my head, and that's something we don't have as well.
Um, I think it, it might be stretching our, our space a little thin, but that's my personal opinion, not that I want one group to have an activity and the other one not to. I don't, um, Sarah could look into it more and let us know at our regular board meeting, um, if it's a feasible option.
Uh, we could also just potentially, for, seeing as we're doing, you know, specific sports, we could do, and, and I'm just literally thinking out loud here, potentially just select chorus or just the jazz band, um, as opposed to the full band and the full chorus.
I mean, we also have the option of the elementary school gym as well.
Well, we don't because school is still happening then. So when the after.
Okay.
We'll still in session at the elementary school.
Yeah, that's right, okay. I just wanna make sure that we're, you know, we're trying to include as many kids as possible. And we're not just leaving, you know, a, a group of kids behind, you know?
So we can, uh, move forward with sports this evening as planned, and we can go back if the, I'm seeing, I, I'd like to know that I have a majority of the board that would be supporting this before I, you know, before we spend too. Like to know that I have a majority of the board that would be supporting this before I, you know, before we spend too much time on it. But we can certainly go back and meet with the arts teachers as well as the. Mr. Glubcheck and the two co-athletic directors to start to figure out an after-school schedule of sorts.
Board members, Aaron, nice to see you. We can, if we, can you indicate one at a time if, if you're for this, against this? Sarah, before they, they move forward, TJ, obviously you're for it, Matt, voice to the opinion, Michelle?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yeah, I'm pretty excited about all the. Different, I don't know, how, how it's all laid out, I appreciate all of you for working all of that out. And I know it's a lot of rules that we have to follow, but.
Aaron?
Bring out you, Barbara, I'm laughing.
Say again?
I said, you know, I'm not laughing at you.
Okay. Aaron?
Hundred percent, we should try to get everything.
Okay, and then that opens the doors for clubs also at some point somehow down the road. Let's, maybe we can get our feet wet with some sports and maybe a band practice or chorus and take it in steps. But that would be next, I'm sure, the next request would be, why can't we have clubs? So, okay, everybody, moving forward. Oh, Yucwan, sorry. I didn't, I, I almost skipped you, Yucwan.
It's fine, yes.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay, Sarah.
Alright, any other questions or anything or comments or anything on the sports plan and moving forward with that?
Anything else, Sarah, that's it for that?
That's it for the sports presentation.
Okay, thank you, Lena and Mr. Ferry and everybody else that worked on it. We can move on to our new business. Four point one, a motion to approve the tuition agreement between the district and Chester Union Free School District as presented. Motion please?
I'll make a motion.
Second, Yucwan, Barbara, pick, any discussion on this contract? All in favor, I? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. A motion to approve the tuition agreement between the district and Warwick Valley Central School District as presented, motion? Aaron, second, Barbara? Any discussion on this contract? Okay, all in favor, I? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. A motion to approve the following coaches for fall two sports as presented, it's Mr. Cron for girl soccer. Mr. Ferry for cross-country and Mr. Fraylor for boy soccer. Motion please? Barbara, Yucwan for the second, okay, any discussion?
Can I just interrupt?
All in favor?
Um, Sue, can you just talk about, at the last meeting, I believe we discussed the sports and things. And when we talked about sports stipends, it was specifically decided by the board to go with the full stipend despite the shortened season. Because the additional work that they were going to be expected to do and the additional knowledge and responsibilities they had. Specific to COVID, and that if that wasn't there, that the stipend would have been shortened similar to what they were last year.
Right, absolutely, yes, that was discussed and it was the board's consensus that they had a lot of extra work to do. To coach a sport and we moved forward with the full stipend. So now all in favor, is there any other discussion, questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, I? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Good luck to our coaches.
You, uh.
Thank you.
Thank you to Chris and thank you to Cron for all the hard work you guys have been putting into this.
And Lena.
And Lena.
Yes, and Lena.
And Lena, can't forget Lena.
Thank you, I again wanna thank all the committee members, I truly couldn't do this task without all of your input, so I do appreciate that.
It was, it was a lot, definitely, they, I, I don't think people realize how many different organizations we have to listen to specific to sports, right? It's the New York State Education Department has their rules, New York State Health Department has their rules. NISPA, the New York State Physical Health People have their own set of rules we have to follow. Then we have the Orange County Department of Health that we have to follow and section nine has their own rules. So it's taking literally five different departments, department set of rules and combining them into one document for us. So it was a lot of digesting information, so thank you to the full committee for putting that work in.
Yes, thank you very much. On our next scheduled meeting is our regular business meeting in March fifteenth via Zoom at this point. And we are going to move into executive session, no action will be taken after this. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for the reason of negotiations conducted pursuant to it? The Taylor Law involving the Greenwood Lake Teachers Association and the district. Motion please, Barbara, second, TJ, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, everybody, for joining us, we will see you in March. Bye, everybody.
Board members, you can check your email right now for the invite to the count, to the executive session.